How's that? So I call the March 16th Planning Board meeting to order 6:30. And Paul, can you read the COVID stuff?
I'll be pleased to. In accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the March 16th, 2021 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow viewers, users, to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Login instructions. Instructions and the meeting link for the specific meeting can be found at the following web address, www.falmouthma.gov backslash planning. Please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you've previously used Zoom on the device you will use to access the meeting. Three, additionally, excuse me, additionally, public comments may be sent in advance to the meeting through planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may also be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made part of the meeting record, may be read into the record, summarized, or displays during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternate, alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thanks, Paul. And then you're on also for the minutes of March 9th, 2021.
Yeah, I recommend approval of the minutes of March 9th, 2021, as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so last meeting, we deferred the minutes of the meeting on 13th February because I hadn't received them. We still haven't received those. They're being processed by the Town Manager's Office.
Thank you. Okay, March 9th minutes have been moved and seconded. Please show a hand, all in favor unless there are other comments. Okay, so all seven of us are approving that.
Also, also, the minutes of 23 February 2021 are recommended for approval. We didn't last time.
Okay, so February 23 recommended for approval. May I have a second on that, Charlotte? Okay, any, any comments? Okay, show of hands, please. Thank you. Okay, now, Tom called all of you, and I hope you all had a chance to read what he has sent, and I'd like to have him come in and chime in on this because there have been a lot of changes this afternoon, late this afternoon. So, Tom. You're muted, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to note that we received an email late this afternoon from the Manager's Office regarding annual town meeting, and the Manager's Office has requested the Board take a vote regarding a town meeting. This is not on the agenda, but Frank Duffy has opined and confirmed with me in writing that if we have something that comes up that is unbeknownst to the Chair, that the Chair could not reasonably have anticipated, and it is of great import, the Board can take it under advisement. So that meeting notice, all topics that the Chair reasonably anticipates 48 hours in advance, given the discussions today with the town clerk, town manager, and I'm assuming the moderator, there's been some changes to the town meeting that the Board will be asked to vote on tonight. So I just want to make sure we knew that this was on the, this was on the Board's docket for tonight, but not on the agenda for anybody who might happen to be tuning in.
Okay.
We wanted to do the decision for Mr. Devaney, so those folks who are all in the waiting room can go do something else, if that's the order you'd like to maintain, ma'am.
I think I'd rather do that. Don't you all agree or not? Is there anybody who disagrees with going on with the decision for Devaney? Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, Paul.
I understand one of the reasons for doing this is to have a special town meeting in June where there'd be more open participation, perhaps at another venue. So since the, we've received a lot of letters and comments on this particular article, perhaps it's wise to do that.
We'll discuss that just coming up after the decision for the Devaney decision. Okay? We have two versions of it here, the really short one with only the conditions, and then we've got an almost equally short one with the findings. So what's the Board's druthers? The short one or that one?
The short one.
The short one? Okay, may I have somebody make the motion? Paul?
I think it's important to put the findings in. It doesn't add that, that much more to it. I agree with Charlotte that they were too long in the past. To put the motion in without the findings and just conditions probably is a little incomplete. So since the finding is only two paragraphs, I would prefer to leave that in there.
Well, in this case, that is my preference, too, because these things were brought up.
Right.
And there are only a couple of them. So I don't care. Somebody read the motion. Charlotte, go ahead.
I'll read it. Here's the motion, "Let the Planning Board vote to approve the application of Devaney Building Corporation under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for the construction of a new 50-foot-by-100-foot-by-34-foot-tall storage building as depicted on site plans entitled Site Plan Prepared for Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution 266/270 Woods Hole Road, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by D.H. Martin Engineering Incorporated, dated January 15, 2021. It is at a scale of 1 inch to 30 feet, pages 1 to 3, along with drawing status schematic design set titled "Hooey New Storage Facility," excuse me, 270 Woods Hole Road, Woods Hole, Mass., prepared by UDA Architects, dated January 25, 2021, scale of an eighth inch to one foot, with the following findings. The applicant, Devaney Building Corporation, on behalf of Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, is seeking to construct a new 50-foot-by-100-foot-by-34-foot-tall storage building, the parcel is own residential A. The applicant is applying for the use for the property under the Dover Amendment. Under the Dover Amendment, the Planning Board may apply reasonable regulations to a project to be used for an educational use that concern the bulk and height and structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements." This is under MGL 40A, Section 3. The Town of Falmouth Engineering Division commented on the above-mentioned site plans in a referral dated March 5, 2021. The Planning Board finds the applicant has adequately addressed the Engineering Division's comments. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to the issues related to the building code. Conditions, check two. The first one, the plan should be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board at a public meeting to determine if the modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit. Excuse me. Something about a permit. Pursuant to 24183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy issue until the Pointing Board, Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. And second, construction of this project shall follow the Town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions document, which can be found on the Engineering Division's page of the Town website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the Planning Board, who would be the permitting authority for this project.
Okay, I have one correction in the first line under findings. It's Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, not institute. They're frequently used, almost interchangeably, but. And now I need a section, a second for this motion?
Second.
What question?
What?
I particularly brought up a question that all the lighting would be down lighting, and I want to make sure that's mentioned because I'm, my own, the only thing we can talk about what they can do there, and that they've created a huge loom in the sky, and I don't want them to expand it anymore. They did say they're gonna do it, but I want to make sure it's mentioned in the findings.
Okay, how do you want to state that?
I believe that they're noted on the plan.
Ah.
That motion is constructed per the plan, including the lighting that would like.
That's fine. I just want to make it clear because that's my only issue. That's good. Thank you.
Fine. It's been moved and seconded. Yes, Paul? You're, you're muted, Paul.
I have a comment. One place we talked about 266 slash 270 Woods Hole Road, then we go back to 270. That hasn't been discussed, but I think we should be consistent. The discussion was, if I recall, that the DPO is gonna come up with the correct address. So we should be consistent in the motion that we refer the same way instead of changing it.
Just so I can correct it on here, where, where does it say 260?
In the motion, it says 266, fourth line, 266 slash 270.
Yep.
And next to last line says 270.
That's the title that is on the plan, so I'm directly just referencing the title that is actually on the plan.
Okay.
But the issue is if you go to Falmouth GIS and you look up 266, you don't find one. And I, I asked that question when we first started down the road. So I think Paul's point is good.
So do you want to take out the 266 and just leave it 270 Woods Hole Road?
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay.
Just change the title that the plan is?
No. Oh, yeah, site, no. On the fourth line, under the motion, "Site Plan Prepared for Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution", where it says 266 backslash 270.
Right, because that's the title of the plan.
Oh.
I'm not, I'm not putting that in. That's actually, that's what is on the plan that they provided to us. And then the schematic drawing is references only 270.
One's a site plan and one is the drawing of the design of the.
Okay. So we have to stick with the titles as given to us. Okay. So.
Apologies, I just realized I didn't have my video on while I was talking to all of you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just the titles of it. And Jim, I understand what you're saying. My understanding was the, they were going to be working with engineering to kind of finalize the address.
When this was sent out, I got a 266. I looked up, I couldn't find a 266 in the GIS, GIS. So it's like, that leaves a lot of confusion when you do that. So I, whatever the meaning is, so not everyone goes to look it up and see what the town records say, but.
I don't think it's been assigned yet.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so with this discussion, are we satisfied and we can vote now or no? Okay, please show your hands because it's been moved and seconded. Paul, are you, yep, okay, so seven out of seven. Thank you. Moving on. Okay, this is where we need to have discussion of the request for the delay in the town meeting, I believe, before we get on to the Planning Board discussion in regard to Article 21. So, Tom, if you would like to enlarge upon that?
Yes, if I may. So this morning, a meeting of, I know that Peter Johnson Staub and Michael Palmer were both in the meeting because they both called me during the course of the meeting to clarify a couple of things. But in an effort to have more, excuse me, in-person discussion at town meeting, there was a request to, to have a truncated town meeting, to put only the critical financial items on the, on the floor for town meeting. That does include Article 16, which is funding for the recodification, to take up only those articles at the virtual town meeting on April 12. And all the other articles would be IP'd. And the reason for that is because if you don't close town meeting, if you continue town meeting, those funds are not available for all those purposes that they would want them for. So what has been proposed is to bring only those crucial, time-sensitive, financial-sensitive articles to town meeting. Everything else would be IP'd to a special town meeting that would be in June. The effect of that is, is that all the articles that were proposed for town meeting have since been denied and would have to be, would, wouldn't be able to be voted without a positive recommendation of the Planning Board. But fortunately for the Planning Board's articles, they all have a positive recommendation of the Planning Board. And the hearing that the Planning Board has for town meeting are good for six months. So as long as those town meeting articles that the Board has discussed and voted approval on get to town meeting before September, they are still valid, the hearing is still valid. But what the select, what the Town Management Office has asked and Town Council advises that the planning board should vote to assent to take up these zoning articles at a special town meeting in June, rather than at the town meeting in April. And that would be the motion that they hoped that someone would make and that the Board would vote on, essentially taking all those articles to a special town meeting in June.
Does everybody have a full understanding of what Tom has just described? Does anybody have any questions or objections to that?
I do.
Paul?
When we formulate this motion, we probably need to refer to a special town meeting in June or another time because the way things are going now, that town meeting could be called off, too. If we have a motion, we should probably couch it in terms at the next town meeting in June or subsequent to that time.
At a town meeting expected, anticipated to be in June?
Yeah, something like that or later. Because if we lock it into June and somehow we can't do the June town meeting, then we're stuck again.
So if I can reread that motion that someone else is going to make?
Yep.
Planning Board vote to assent to take up the zoning articles at a special town meeting anticipated to be in June 2021.
Is that satisfactory to everybody now?
Or later.
Somebody, yes, Paul?
Or later.
Or later, he's saying?
Yeah.
Okay, would somebody make that motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded as Tom read it. Okay, all in favor? Show of hands, please. Thank you, seven out of seven.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Planning Board discussion. Remember, we closed the hearing on Article 21. And you saw, I hope, all these pages that Tom forwarded through with some comments, including some changes that Mr. Armit came through with, potential changes. And other comments, plus Michaela put together a spreadsheet on the pros and cons that we had in the letters from people, all to elicit intelligent discussion tonight on this and how the Board wants to go on it. So who wants to lead this off? Bob?
I found the pros and cons list to be extremely helpful. I, I've always done that myself whenever I'm trying to make a decision. I like to make a list of the pros and cons. And one of the things was talking about open space versus putting houses out there. And the comment was that we need residential homes, and I would argue with that. I don't think we need any more single-family residences. We need rental units, and we don't want to put them out there. We want to keep them close to the village centers as opposed to expanding and creating more sprawl. And the other component to that, putting a bunch of housing out there, is you put 150, 200 houses out there, you're adding 150 or 300 to 400 more cars, they're gonna be accessing 151, which is already a dangerous road as it is. And I, I just think the argument for having, maintaining it as a golf course is great. If somebody wants to purchase it as a, as a golf course, that's, that's fine. I would love it if Conservation purchased it and kept it as Conservation. But the worst-case scenario would be to develop that for, for housing. And I, I think this is the lesser of two evils in some regards, where the land is gonna be preserved somewhat, and in 40 years, it will come to the town. So it, it's almost like banking conservation land for the town, and I am for that.
Okay, anybody else wants to comment? Charlotte?
I too found the pros and cons very helpful, but I wish they had really narrowed the issue down a little bit more because the freels want to sell, that probably wouldn't , I used to say as a golf course, but it's not going to, there's going to be change, and the alternatives are pretty clear. It's either housing or it's the solar array. Those are the two live proposals at this time. And in one, it's true, trees will be lost, and that's a sadness, but it's been the longstanding policy of this Board and the Board of Selectmen to protect the aquifer, which is right there. This is really at the heart of the aquifer. It's next to Coonamesset Pond, Crooked Pond, Deep Pond, you can see how close it is, and it is no place for the kind of sewerage systems that would be required for housing. So it's really, which are you going to choose? Trees that will eventually grow back or water that probably could never be again as clean? So I clearly favor the solar array proposal.
Okay. Jim?
I do as well. One of the things that many of the letters and the different town agencies weighed in on was just, you know, the preservation. What they, what they didn't key on, as I believe there's 45 or some number of A&R lots that could be immediately developed without a subdivision plan right away because they think they have over a mile of street frontage. So I think a lot of the decisions that these groups have made were done in a vacuum, and they didn't really understand the facts. And to have, what happens is if you have 45 lots, you, any developer in there immediately has a huge amount of income that he could do, and then he could take five years to do the rest of his development because those lots would be developed right away. And I think that would be a devastating thing for the whole town, and I think a lot of people really didn't either want to know that or look at it or care to learn that. But that's, that is the whole reason why I think we need to maybe modify some of our zoning restrictions that we put on this overlay district to tailor it to this thing because I think it saves the Coonamesset Pond and, and hundreds of acres forever. And I, I just, I'm amazed that people just made the decision on just a couple of, oh, we want to save the trees and don't cut them down, and we shouldn't do this. I just, I think you gotta look at the big picture, and that's what we gotta bring to town meeting.
Comments, any further? Bob?
And another comment was about it only for disturbed land like the mining pits and all that. I look at pouring a bunch of chemicals onto a piece of property as disturbing the land, and it's been done for years and years and years, and this is gonna stop that. So I think that terminology about being disturbed and undisturbed, this property to me has already been disturbed, so I don't see the conflict there.
Well, one thing I think that should be pointed out into, in our discussion tonight is, as Tom pointed out, as far as we have determined, there is no purchase and sale agreement at this point. There's only an agreement to lease the property. So the fact that we believe that the town will get this after 40 years may not be true. We don't know that for a fact. What we do know is that we like the fact that it'll be used for solar. That's a, a policy of the town to increase solar as much as possible, that it will keep it open space, which is part of our local comprehensive plan as much as possible. We, in that area, we wanted to keep greater zoning, greater acreage in the zoning. The other thing that I think we need to take into consideration as well is that if it does go to housing, forget what people want about a golf course, but it's even worse than that, the town's going to have to provide all kinds of infrastructure, which is very, very expensive. And even though they may be McMansions that are built out there, there's, the town is still not going to get enough taxes, as has been done in a number of studies evidently, to pay for the infrastructure, the needs. So I wanted to point that out, too, as a part of the premise of what we're talking about tonight. And Tom, I saw your hand up. You wanted to say more.
Well, no, ma'am, you clarified that. I wanted to clarify Bob's point that there, this idea that the property would become the town's in 40 years is somewhat speculative. In the testimony that they provided, they said, "If we get to do these, these extensive arrays with more clearing, then we would be able to, to negotiate the purchase of the property." then that we would be able to negotiate the purchase of the property, that they would turn over to the town in 40 years. What they have said now is that we can build a solar array on what is there. We won't get quite the benefits that we would get with the larger array field if we're allowed to clear more land. But they do have an agreement with the owner, as I understand, to lease the property. But there's no agreement in place to purchase the property and certainly no stipulation that that property would come to the town in 40 years.
Bob?
But that's only if they don't get to develop the, the large-scale one that they want. That's if they have to curb it, correct?
That, that's what I understand. But I, just to your point that it comes to the town in 40 years, that's, you know, we don't know that.
Right, yeah.
That, that was their verbalization of what their intent is.
Yes.
Nothing is written to give the town any assurances that that would happen. And I felt it necessary, as did Tom, to point that out.
Okay.
Okay, Pam?
Couldn't the town enter into a right of first refusal on that property?
Town has a right of first refusal presently. Because it's in Chapter 61 land.
Oh, right. So they get that tax break for that.
So when that, when the decision is made to sell the property and likely when you go, and I don't know this because I'm not a tax attorney, likely when you go from the golf course to the solar arrays, much like what happened with the Barnstable County Fairgrounds, is the revenue produced at Barnstable County Fairgrounds exempted them from their tax-exempt status for those parcels. So with that same thought, I would think when the property goes from being a golf course to solar, that is when the 61A is up and the town would have a right of first refusal at that point. To what appetite the town has to purchase a golf course, what appetite the town has to purchase it as open space? I can't tell you, but that would be, you know, the town required to pony up for that, that property.
I would love to see some, and I know there is a property on there that they're talking about using for affordable housing, but I think it's a relatively small structure. And I would love to see them add some land for some rental units to be built on that property as well. I mean, we don't have much opportunity to have a parcel of land of this size. And, you know, whether we agree or not, I think it's up for discussion to have a package treatment plant in an area like this where we could be away from the aquifer and have some affordable housing.
Charlotte? And then Bob?
I'd like to say that I really disagree with that. We, I thought as a board agreed that affordable housing is truly affordable when it's near public transportation, when it's near food stores and other basic necessity kind of stores where it's walkable, so you're not required to have a car. That is not good land for affordable housing at all.
Except Charlotte, Charlotte, we have so little affordable housing here. And if you look at where affordable housing is being built now, it's not, it doesn't meet that criteria at all.
Yes, which is a shame. And why add to that shame? I'd also like to point out that we are not allowed to require that it be rental.
Right.
That's not within the authority of the planning board. So we're to be set aside for affordable housing, some small portion, very far from the aquifer. But you can't get off the aquifer up there, but were that possible? You can't say that it's rental. So a great deal of what you're saying is either against our own plan or not within our authority.
We can't say, I'm sorry, we, we can't say it's only rental, but a developer can come in and say, this is going to be rental units, just like Lantern Lane.
Parted developer could do that.
Right. I wasn't suggesting that we make that determination.
I recognize Bob after Charlotte and then Jim, okay?
Yeah. One of the reasons I like to preserve this, whether it's, whether we're using a solar farm as preservation, is we give a future generation a choice of what to do with this land. You know, when this thing expires, you know, 50 years, 40 years from now, there'll be 140 acres that another generation can make the decision for. I think that for us to make all these decisions and future generations don't have any land to make any decisions about, I want to leave something for them to decide whether they want to conserve it or whether they want to build it. I think this is a way to preserve it for a future generation.
You're right.
You know, Pam mentioned that we've let other things go. I want to make a point that every time that an affordable housing project has come out that's not in the center of town, that I've objected to it because it's not with the comprehensive plan. Since we've overridden, my objection just gets run over, the housing people wanted to go. But the really important part, and I don't want to lose this, it costs more than $8,000 a year to maintain a car and to add that burden on housing so far from jobs and public transportation is the exact reason why our local comprehensive plan calls for building in our village centers. And the people that aren't paying attention to that are, give me a problem.
Okay. Now, it appears that the full board, I have not heard anything from John, but it appears that the full board with, what I haven't heard from John, is saying that, yes, we support this. But remember, what we're supporting here, we already supported solar on there, under our solar bylaw, overlay bylaw. What we're actually dealing with right here is Article 21, which allows some changes to our original solar bylaw. And that was one of the things that was pointed out in the spreadsheet, is that objections were raised that we had spent a large amount of time as a board deliberating that overlay district and got a lot of input from people in town. And so some portion of the negative comments said that we shouldn't be changing it because we had really judged it and weighed it in the past. So that what they're asking for under Article 21 is changes to it. And Bob Ament came in with what looks to be today, which we can't consider because it's new information. We could only consider it if we wanted to make those changes, but it would not be from the applicant. Conserving more of the land too, dealing with a little bit more of the setbacks, which might be advisable to do. Now, having said that, because of this new wrinkle in when it's going to be taken up by town meeting, we, in fact, there, there are two ways of doing that. We could say that our recommendation would be made to town meeting on the floor, so we don't make a recommendation tonight. A solid recommendation one way or the other. Or we could make a recommendation as this other one coming in from Bob, excuse me, indicated with about the 35-foot setback. And from what Tom said, whatever we vote on tonight could be carried through, this is my understanding, could be carried through for seven months. So I don't, I don't know how people want to do and I don't know what Tom would recommend knowing the discussions that have gone on.
That'd be Tom, me?
That'd be Tom, you.
Well, I, I, I think that when the hearings closed, it's sort of difficult to make an amendment suggested by the applicant.
That's the problem.
Fact. That seems very problematic to me. And, and sort of the negotiated aspect of changing zoning is one of those things that, you know, people in my profession are concerned about because of the unintended consequences as we keep sort of tweaking things and moving it along. So I'm a little uncomfortable with, with, first off, the board trying to change someone's motion. I don't think we can do that with an amended, while we can make a recommendation. It says, we would recommend this if these things were in place. But the fact that we got an additional suggestion after the hearing closed just seems problematic to me.
Well, the thing is, we'd already be, if we were going to vote this for town meeting, we would already be recommending it as amended. And that would be the one that we have been already dealing with. And we could do that, but then there would have to be, if we wanted to change it a little bit more, there'd have to be a further tweak on the floor, I believe. Is that correct, Tom?
I would think.
Charlotte?
Um, Tom, could I just ask you to characterize the tweaks that were sent to us late today? They struck me as being very marginal.
Yeah, on a lot of 35 acres or more. Essentially, that zoning change would be, this would only apply on a lot of 35 acres or more.
Right. I can't see why we would tie ourselves in knots for such a marginal tweak.
Well, if it, and not to say that, I said, if, if, if I was the one who said, how about this? Because we are the staff and we had those discussions. But I think the provenance of that tweak is the issue because the hearings closed. People can contest a, you know, a zoning bylaw. As you know, sometimes people do when the Attorney General has something that comes before them. Jim is very proud of the fact that in 2012, when a lot of people complained that the zoning for LIC was spot zoning, that the Attorney General pointed out that it's not spot zoning because it did, it was part of a, of a process and a properly characterized process through the hearings and the comprehensive plan. So just adding something at this point, I think, has the potential to, you know, to, to sort of create problems with the Attorney General. Because if someone wants to contest it, you know, here's a, here's a change made after the hearing closed by the applicant essentially. Those are the sort of things that we like to steer away from. I never want a good project or something like that to be held up on appeal because of procedural issue. And I think that has the potential here.
Besides which, just now, Bob chatted through, forget it. So he's asking us, just forget the change that he submitted today.
And that's a good idea.
I think we voted as, as it was amended, just before we closed the hearing. And, you know, town meeting will do with what they want.
Yeah.
Did we vote?
No, he's, I think he said, we voted tonight.
Yeah, we voted. Yeah. Yeah, let's pass this on.
Close the meeting.
Let's, let's, the meetings, the hearing's been closed. We're voting to recommend it as it was amended prior to the close of the hearing. So I think that's the end and that's what we should do.
And I'll be happy to, to, to put that on the screen for those folks who want to know exactly what we're voting on.
Please.
I thought we might get through a meeting without a screen share, but, you know, I got.
Well, we don't have to, but those who might be watching us might want to know. I think our board knows exactly what we're voting on.
All right. So let me just take a quick moment and bring this up. I believe you're seeing a particularly colorful slide that says petition to Article 21.
That's correct.
So Section 240, 254B adds sub-paragraph to read, "The planning board may allow a side or rear yard abutting permanently conserved open space to be reduced to no less than 35 feet in a residential or agricultural district within a no-disturb zone. The planning board may allow landscaping and other screening." Revised Section 240, 254D1, which reads, "No more than two acres of forest land shall be deforested for any one-ground-mounted solar motor-voltaiac installation. And no such installation shall be installed on such land that was deforested within the prior five years." By adding, "The planning board may allow additional deforestation of up to four more acres or 10% of the lot, whichever is less. But for any deforestation allowed in excess of two acres, the planning board shall require mitigation such as the permanent conservation of open space and/or reforestation on or off-site of at least twice the area of such excess." And then Section 240, 254D, Sub-Section 2, to read, "Except as allowed under Section 240-254D1, land cleared in excess of two contiguous acres in connection with any single installation is prohibited."
Okay, thank you, Tom. So now, so that our viewers can see what we're voting on, I would need a motion to the words are failing me now, to give a positive recommendation to town meeting on the amended article. Charlotte? May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of a positive recommendation to town meeting? Okay, that's seven out of seven of us. Thank you, all of you.
And who was, who was the second on that, please?
Pam.
Pam was. So now it's going to be up to town meeting how they vote on this. Thank you, all of you. Okay, next, street acceptance recommendations. We have a street.
If I may, ma'am.
Yes, Tom, absolutely.
I, I, I promised we would add something and take something off. We actually, the selectmen did not make a recommendation on the street acceptance and refer it to the planning board. I know it was on their agenda for March 8th and we prepared the packets for the board. It was prior to that. So we don't have a referral from the Board of Selectmen yet. So I would recommend that we don't move on this just to make sure that we are following the process and we don't get the oh, cart in front of the horse, particularly on a private way.
Good idea.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything about this. It's on the agenda, but.
If the, if the selectmen make that recommendation at their next meeting, we can certainly bring it up on our meeting on March 23rd.
Okay, Jim?
I question the private way. What street are we talking about?
Uh, Winthrop Drive East.
That's a private way?
Yeah, two years ago, we accepted Winthrop Drive West. And now they want to do Winthrop Drive East across the street.
Okay, I knew we, I knew Winthrop Drive was a public way. I got confused of east and west. Thank you.
That's why I remembered it. We had seen it, seen it before, but. Okay. Planning Board, April meeting schedule. Oh, Paul, you have a comment or a question? You're muted, Paul.
Um, I just have a question. You refer here to a gift easement. That's a legal term. Is that not a, correct? What is implied by that?
Could you repeat your question, please?
In this memo you wrote about Winthrop Drive East, you mentioned that the board select must acquire by gift easement. That's a legal term, isn't it?
It may have needed a comma by gift or easement. Well, there's, there's three steps to a street acceptance. One, the selectmen vote to lay out the way. The planning board makes a non-binding recommendation. Second, town meeting votes to accept the way. And the third part is the property is acquired by a taking or an easement. That could come in the part of someone offering the property to the town, which is usually what happens with the developer giving the streets to the town. So that could be taking by eminent domain or a gift. In this case, I believe because these are the older streets, it is a taking, but there's no, essentially, there's nobody left anymore because of the age of the street.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Planning Board, April meeting schedule. I gather everybody here has said April 6th is okay to meet? Okay. And Tom? Okay.
April.
Six.
It's good.
Okay, and what else, Tom? Did you want to discuss in regard to April meetings?
Well, originally, we anticipated that April 13th would be out because town meeting was going to be on the 12th. I don't know how long town meeting is going to take, but I certainly think it's perfectly reasonable to assume that we won't be meeting on the 13th. So the question for the board is, would you prefer to meet on our regular date of April 27th and have three weeks between meetings? Or would you prefer to meet April 20th and just have two weeks between the meetings? The only thing that would typically, the only thing when we have three weeks between a meeting outside of the state of emergency, I always wondered if someone tries to slip in an A and R right after the board votes because they won't meet for 21 days and they could conceivably get a constructive approval on an A and R. But there's little chance of that because under the, under COVID regulations, there's no timelines for things like that. I just want to, you know, find out from the. I just want to, you know, find out from the board how we're going to go about doing this. Do we want to meet the 6th and the 20th and the 27th? Or we just want to go from the 6th to the 27th? What's the board's pleasure?
I don't really care.
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere, so.
Then we might opt for the 6th and the 27th. And if we do have something that comes up, we can certainly post a meeting for the 20th.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the day after the marathon.
You're running it, right, Paul? So you'll be too exhausted for that, right?
I think the marathon's in October this year.
I don't know when they're doing it. They're having 20,000 runners supposedly.
In October, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, do they already change it from August? Yes. Oh, this is the marathon.
April.
Did they?
It's usually in April.
You're talking road race, you're talking marathon.
Right, the Boston Marathon.
Sorry, sorry.
I only run errands. I don't really know when the road race is.
Okay, so we're April 6th and 27th then. Are there any announcements? Okay, I do not have any general correspondence. Tom, has any come in that I don't have?
I think the only thing that we had forwarded to the board previously was about the seminar for solar siting reform that I'm going to tomorrow. It's a CPTC event. Everyone is invited. There's no charge. I talked to them the other day, and they said they have 400 attendees on, on St. Patrick's Day to listen about what the changes are on solar siting in Massachusetts and in Rhode Island.
Okay, so there's no other general correspondence, correct?
As far as I know, yes, ma'am.
Okay, future agenda items? Bob?
Can we get an update on multifamily?
I'm meeting with a gentleman on Thursday. Is it okay to call you a gentleman, Mr. Drooly?
Yes, it is.
Very well.
Okay.
Okay, so we would look for it up. Paul?
It'd be nice to get an update on the process of getting an assistant town planner.
Okay.
I received numerous resumes on Monday.
But it's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it now.
All right.
Next time.
Anything else? Or future agenda items? Charlotte?
I don't know that this is a full agenda item, but it's something I'm curious about. Assuming that the abbreviated town meeting passes the money for finishing the recodification, how long is it estimated that process will take?
Oh, we can answer that right now, probably.
Really?
Well, I'm sure Tom has an estimate from Bob and Bob.
Oh, okay, great. What?
I, I hate to correct the chair on TV.
Corrected.
No, you're not.
So if we could get one at that meeting on the, our next meeting, we could maybe get an estimate.
Very well.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Okay, so our next meeting is March 23rd. And if there's nothing else, it is 7:20. Going once, going twice, adjourned.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.